Good evening, everybody. Michael, done with the place in here. You're right. These mics really work. Welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Westfield Town Council of January 3, 2023. At 6 o'clock PM for the purpose of organizing for the year 2023 and transacting such other businesses may properly come before the mayor and town council. On December 13, 2022, notice of this meeting was provided to the Westfield leader and star ledger, posted on the municipal building bulletin board, and filed in accordance to the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise for the invocations will be given by Rabbi Ethan Proznet of Temple Emanuel in Westfield and remain standing for the salute to the flag.
Our God and God of all people, we celebrate our town's leadership for men and women of inspiration and insight, visionaries to build our community. In your image stewards dedicated to justice, unafraid to face the challenges of our day, so that our town resonates with compassion and help, justice and mercy, kindness and peace. Bless our leaders with dedication and foresight, fortitude and imagination to solve the issues that we face for our future. May they lead us to a time when neighbors sit down, share, and listen peacefully so that our community thrives. Source and shelter grant safety and security to our elected politicians, our town employees, police firefighters, our town volunteers and first responders. We thank all of you for your dedication and your commitment to Westfield. On this day of our town's reorganization, we pray that those who seek meaning and purpose in their lives and through their work will find you in the potential to make a difference in their actions. At this time of new beginnings, may your presence guide even those who do not seek you. We pray that you might be present to those who labor on behalf of our community. Thank you all for all your blessings. Together we say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, Rabbi. And we have these special guests here this evening. Where are you Senator Brandtman? I'd like to welcome Senator John Brandtman, who's going to come up and say a few words. And thank you Senator for being here and Happy New Year to you.
I came to wish everyone a very healthy and Happy New Year and pledge that we work together as one community, as one state, and as one nation. We all know how important that is. Let's put partisanship aside and let's concentrate on how to work for the people of our town, our state, and our country. And God bless everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you Senator. I think those are words we can all agree to and strive for for sure. I'm going to make a few opening remarks and then save most of my comments for the State of the Town address, give it a little bit later. So I do want to thank all of you for joining us this evening. A special thanks to Rabbi Ethan Proznet from Temple Emanuel for that invocation and to Reverend Dr. Jim Herdick from First Congregational Church, who'll be delivering the benediction to close out the evening. So thank you for being here. One year ago tomorrow, five of us on this dais newly reelected were being sworn in by Governor Murphy outside in the cold, wearing masks to protect against the COVID Omicron variant that was sweeping through our community. We moved inside here to a near-empty chamber for the reorganization meeting, having discouraged the public from attending in person for public health reasons. So tonight, it brings me great pleasure to see all of us and all of you here in person to reflect on what we accomplished in 2022, share our goals for 2023, and most importantly, appoint the many volunteers to our various boards and commissions and reorganize this council for the exciting work that lies ahead. But first, I'd like to thank the members of the town council, including Finance Committee Chair Linda Hapgood, Public Works Committee Chair Data Contract, Public Safety Committee Chair Mike Dardia, Code Review Committee Chair Mark Parmley, Councilperson Don Mackey, Scott Katz, Emily Root, and Mark LaGrippo, as well as former Councilman Jim Boyce for their leadership and contributions this past year. Thank you all very much. None of these accomplishments would be impossible without the incredible efforts of our town employees, and in particular, Town Clerk Maureen Lashy, who's happily hiding behind us, who serves as the heartbeat of town hall and didn't miss a beat when she was promoted to this position last year. To our town attorney, and I always like to remind everybody, our former mayor, Tom Jardine, who manages to stay one step ahead of our legislative ambitions, enabling us to make progress on so many initiatives. And of course, there are not enough words to express our gratitude for the unflappable and hardest-working town administrator Jim Gilde, who continues to lead with a steady hand and remains the center of gravity for us all. Jim's leadership is reflected in the culture of collaboration and professionalism he has instilled among our employees, who never fail to step up when asked and take immense pride in the extraordinary service they provide to our residents. So on behalf of this council, I'd like to thank Department Heads Police Chief Chris Battaloro, Fire Chief Michael Delks, DPW Director Greg O'Neill, Town Planner Don Sammett, Construction Official Frank Woso, Library Director Alan McGinley, newly promoted Assistant Town Administrator Heather Ray, Public Information Officer Kim Ford, and Regional Health Director Megan Adalone, all of whom continue to keep us safe, healthy, and informed. And tonight, I'd also like to welcome the new Executive Director of the Downtown Westfield Corporation Samantha Horning. Samantha, can you just stand and recognize? Today is Samantha's first day on the job, so thank you for being with us tonight, and we are very lucky to have her be leading the downtown in what is going to be a very critical year and years to come. So and lastly, I think on behalf of all of us, thanks to our families, including my own, especially my husband Kip, for their ongoing support of our volunteer service. None of us could serve without them. So let us now move on to tonight's business appointments. And as I mentioned, I'll follow with additional remarks in my State of the Town address. So I now call the meeting to order. Ms. Lashy, may I have a roll call?
Mayor Brendel.
Here.
Councilmembers Hapgood, Parmley.
Here.
LaGrippo.
Here.
Katz.
Here.
Mackey. Contract.
Here.
Dardia.
Here.
Root.
I will now propose the acting and alternate acting mayor appointments for the year 2023. Acting Mayor Mark Parmley, alternate acting Mayor Don Mackey. May I have a motion to accept these appointments? Second by Councilman Contract. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. I will now name council appointments. All of the following appointments will be through December 31 of the stated year. Planning Board Liaison, Michael Dardia, Class III, 2023. Board of Adjustment, Max Sance, 2026, Omar Kharami, 2026, Paul Elbacher, Alternate Number One, 2024. Special Improvement District Board, Lou Kimble, Resident Director, 2025, Les Trent, Resident Director, 2025, Kelly Richardson, Operator Director, 2025, Lauren Bieber, Resident Director, filling an unexpired term through 2023, Linda Hapgood, the council designee, 2023, Craig Gibson, Ex officio, 2023, and Mayor Shelley Brendel, Ex officio through 2023. May I have a motion to accept council appointments? By Don Mackey, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. The following are proposed employee appointments. Resolution to appoint a town engineer, December 31 of this year. Resolution to appoint municipal prosecutor through this year. And resolution to appoint a public defender through this year. May I have a motion to accept employee appointments? Similar by Councilman Root. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? This motion is carried. I will now propose board appointments. Board of Health, Brendan Birch through 2026, Mitchell Shusteris, 2026, Stephen Pentangela, Alternate Number Two, 2024, Council Liaison Emily Root, 2023. Recreation Commission, Jennifer Gilman, Chair, 2025, Ron Felvin, 2025, Jeffrey Pirella, 2025, Tony Stewart, 2025, Timothy Simon, Alternate Number One, 2025, Council Liaison Scott Katz, 2023. Historic Preservation Commission, Mary Ann Healy Rodriguez, Class C, December 31, 2023, filling an unexpired term. Mary Ellen McBay, Alternate Number Two, 2024, Council Liaison Mark LaGrippo, 2023. Tree Preservation Commission, Jennifer Hunt, 2025, Sandy Siasco, 2025, Council Liaison Scott Katz, 2032. Wow, you're there for a long time, 2023. In case you didn't know.
It's a commitment.
Just like the Supreme Court. Memorial Health Library Board, Rupa Matwani, 2027, Rosalie Sarapilia, 2027, Council Liaison Mark Parmley, 2023. Westfield Housing Commission, all of these are through 2023, John O'Brien, Sasha Nisbet, Paul Marcotulio, Carne de Cerro de Castera, Don Sammett, Ex officio member, and Frank Woso, Ex officio member. Public Arts Commission, Gwen Fisher, Class Two, Mayor Designee, 2023, John Levy, Class Three, Town Historian Designee, 2023, Samantha Horning, Class Four, DWC Director, 2023, Margaret Smith, Class Five Resident, 2024, Stacy Plummer, Class Five Resident, 2024, Don Mackey, Class One, Town Council Representative, 2023. Human Relations Advisory Commission, Alexis Jamal, 2025, Cheryl Swift, 2025, Paris Barker, 2025, Segal Goldstein, High School Representative, 2023, and the Council Liaison Scott Katz through 2023. Mental Health Council, Tom Fowler, December 31, 2024, Anne Orangie, 2024, James Catalano, filling an unexpired term through 2023, Ellen Devon, Alternate Number One, 2024, Allison Marquel, Alternate Number Two, filling an unexpired term through 2023, Council Liaison Emily Root, 2023. The Bicycle Board, Doug McNeil, Resident, 2023, Jen Hunt, 2023, James Meiselman, 2023, Darren McCauley, 2023, Council Liaison Mike Dardia. May I have a motion to accept board appointments? Similar by Councilman Parmley, second?
Second.
Similar by Councilman Contract. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. I will now read mayoral appointments and council liaisons. Planning Board, Class Four, Ross Goldstein, Class Four, 2026, Alexandra Carreras, Alternate Number One, 2024, Shelley Brendel, Class One, Mayor Designee, 2023, Michael Delks, Class Two, 2023. Solid Waste Advisory Board, Jeff Brick, 2023. Union County Transportation Advisory Board, David McAllister, 2023. Chamber of Commerce Liaison, Councilman Mark LaGrippo, Union County League of Municipalities, Mayor Brendel, Board of Education Liaison, Mayor Brendel, Second Senior Citizens Housing Corporation Liaison, Councilman Mark Parmley, and the Adams Fest Liaison, Councilman Don Mackey. Okay. I hear about all this stuff. The following are council committees for the year 2023. Finance Policy Committee, Linda Hapgood, Chairwoman, Mark Parmley, Vice Chairman, Scott Katz, and Emily Root. The Public Safety, Transportation, and Parking Committee, Emily Root, Chairwoman, Michael Dardia, Vice Chairman, Linda Hapgood, and David Contract. Code Review and Town Property Committee, Mark Parmley, Chairman, David Contract, Vice Chairman, Don Mackey, and Mark LaGrippo. Public Works Committee, Scott Katz, Chairman, Don Mackey, Vice Chairwoman, Mike Dardia, and Mark LaGrippo. So just want to take a moment and say thanks to all of you. And for those that have just been appointed to anything, which you are still on the board currently, would you all mind rising so we could at least recognize you? Great, buddy. So very grateful for your service. And for all those who might be watching at home, thank you so much for your volunteer service to the town. So now I have the privilege of delivering the 2023 State of the Town Address. First and foremost, I'm happy to report that the state of our town is exceptionally strong, and we have fully recovered from our COVID challenges and fiscal uncertainty, emerging stronger than ever with a resiliency that gives us confidence as we move boldly into the future. 2022 was a year for return to normalcy. 2023 is a year for new beginnings, reflected most visibly tonight in the many upgrades you see in these council chambers and more broadly in the key initiatives we are undertaking this year. Our significant progress these past few years can be attributed to two main factors. The first is our steadfast focus on four key priorities since we were first elected. First, strong fiscal oversight. Second, charting a vision for our future. Third, championing quality of life issues. And four, increasing resident engagement and inclusivity. The second is the dedication, enduring commitment, and resiliency of all those who make our work possible, our town employees, resident volunteers, and our business community. I am very proud of the significant accomplishments this council made on many fronts last year, and please indulge me while I share just a few highlights. We welcomed 30 new downtown businesses with additional openings planned for 2023, including Milburn Dally, Fresh &amp; Co., Rumble Boxing, and more. We introduced a proposal for One Westfield Place, the culmination of three years of planning and collaboration with HBC Street Works Development, which I will address more specifically later in my remarks. We adopted a historic first formal shared service agreement with the Board of Education, the Edison School Fields Project, paving the way for future additional Board of Ed shared service initiatives. Delivered a 1.9% tax levy, well below the rate of inflation, resulting in a five-year average increase of only 1.3%, while continuing to maintain a healthy budget surplus. We conducted a remarkably successful bond sale, yielding a net interest cost of 2.49% in a very unfriendly rate, interest rate market, and reaffirmed the town's AAA bond rating, one of only 44 out of 564 municipalities to achieve that status. We reduced auto thefts by 50% as a result of added police patrols, increased surveillance, and license plate reader installations. We paved 16 miles of roads, with approximately 10 paid for by the utility companies as a result of our 2019 road paving ordinance, bringing of our paving total to 60 miles of roads out of 100 in five years. We oversaw the groundbreaking of Maze Cocktails in Cocina, Cocina, and adaptive reuse of the town's historic Northside Train Station with an anticipated late spring 2023 opening, and of Ready Farms, the region's first hydroponic vertical farm and adaptive reuse of the former Hamler Building on North Avenue. We held the fifth and most successful year of Adams Fest, with big kudos to Councilman Mackey over here, which is very financially self-sufficient, ensuring an enduring new tradition for Westfield. We adopted 21 general ordinances, which did everything from regulating 5G, designating historic homes, allowing outdoor consumption of alcohol beverages downtown, and more. We addressed numerous public safety traffic concerns, most notably in the area of Prospect and East Broad. We obtained professional accreditation for the Westfield Police Department Dispatch, making the department one of only five in the state of New Jersey to achieve accreditation for both its service and dispatch departments. We designated three additional historic landmarks, bringing this administration's total to 10 voluntary designations, delivering on our commitment to historic preservation. We received $1.3 million in pursued grants similar to 2021, which was the most in decades. And very importantly, we were awarded Silver Certification by Sustainable Jersey for the third time in town history and the third time in a row with major credits to Councilman Contract and his leadership with the Green Team. There is a much more exhaustive list of accomplishments that can be found on the town website, but I do want to spend some time focusing on our future. Our 23 key objectives remain the same: Continue our strong record of fiscal responsibility and management, championing quality of life issues that matter to all residents, increase resident engagement and continue to foster inclusive and collaborative spirit in our community, and advance plans for revitalizing our downtown. So specifically, we aim to accomplish the following. Terms of fiscal management: Maintain our AAA bond rating and ample surplus while seeking new revenue and cost-cutting solutions to hold the line on property taxes. Continue to invest in capital and infrastructure to upgrade equipment and services and mitigate long-term maintenance costs. Continue to execute an unprecedented multi-year paving program, which calls for 80% of the town road to be paved by 2026, with more than half paid by utility companies. Identify additional shared service opportunities at Board of Ed to deliver greater value to taxpayers. And championing quality of life. As co-chair of the RVL Mayor's Alliance, we're going to prioritize renewed post-COVID efforts on advocating for enhanced Raritan Valley Line peak one-seat ride service with New Jersey Transit, now that normalcy has returned and new commuter traffic patterns have been established. I'm going to continue to engage the Route 28 Mayor's Mobility Consortium to support county efforts to improve traffic congestion and pedestrian mobility along this highly traffic quarter in anticipation of significant grant funding this year. Implement the North Avenue pedestrian sidewalk improvements from Central Avenue to Garwood, enabled by the $400,000 grant we just recently received in the federal omnibus bill. Provide Westfield Police and Fire Departments with optimal resources and equipment to protect our residents and businesses, prioritizing auto theft prevention, speeding and traffic enforcement, sustaining active-duty police force of 62, the highest staffing level in history, and identifying potential for the opportunity to build a new firehouse to meet the needs of today's fire department. We're also going to reassess the staffing and funding of the Westfield Regional Health Department to ensure adequate resources to manage future health crises. And on stormwater, which is important to all of us, identify opportunities to improve flood mitigation and stormwater control measures through the Westfield Infrastructure Resiliency Committee and by actively participating as a new member of the Raway River Watershed Mayor's Council. We're going to reprioritize the green efforts in support of climate action and resiliency policy measures, while continuing to engage and educate the public and business community on sustainability efforts. We're going to initiate the design and engineering phase for the Edison Fields Project. And big priority is to create a detailed master plan for Tamakus Park and assess the potential for the relocation of the Westfield Ring, additional athletic fields, pickleball courts, dog park, bike and walking trails, expanded parking, and new entrance exit off of Laverstnall Road. Implement parking, safety, and restroom improvements to Houlihan's sickbay by the fourth quarter of this year, funded by revenues from the recent cell tower approval. Continue cleanup and capital improvements to Brightwood and Minduaskin Park in collaboration with Friends of Brightwood and Friends of Minduaskin. Complete the second phase of Windsor Park Playground with an anticipated completion date of third quarter of this year. And continue to support historic preservation efforts by pursuing voluntary designations of Westfield's most historic landmarks, and supporting the Historic Preservation Commission's effort to use grant monies to create a historic preservation plan element for the Westfield Master Plan and conduct a historic survey of our most iconic downtown properties. Thirdly, increasing resident engagement and fostering a culture of inclusivity. Continue to support initiatives and events that celebrate and unite our community, including Adams Fest, March to Yorktown Day, public art murals and exhibits, and DWC events such as Sweet Sounds, open quimby, holiday events, and more. And expand initiatives that support our seniors in mental health awareness and education through the efforts of Lifelong Westfield and our Mental Health Council. And continue to prioritize inclusivity, celebrate diversity, and denounce racism and antisemitism by supporting the initiatives of the Human Relations Advisory Commission, also known as HREC. And support the efforts of the Westfield Memorial Library to implement their ambitious strategic plan recommendations towards becoming a premier 21st century community library. And lastly, and most significantly, we're going to advance our plans for revitalizing our historic downtown to be sure it remains vibrant for generations to come. So in last year's State of the Town address, I mentioned, as I have every year, that revitalizing our downtown was a top priority, and we're working towards creating, quote, "fiscally responsible smart growth plan that would enable a new downtown live-work-play ecosystem" to sustain our local businesses for the long term. We also committed to implementing a long-overdue downtown parking solution that would meet the needs of post-COVID commuters, employees, and shoppers. Our unwavering commitment to this forward-looking vision for our downtown, which we have reaffirmed consistently and repeatedly, is why I believe most of us on this dais were first elected, why five of us were reelected just last year, and why Councilman Root was overwhelmingly elected just two months ago. We are committed to following through on our campaign promise to you. And here we are. Almost five years after being first elected, the proposal for One Westfield Place was presented to the public in September. This proposal is the culmination of three years of planning and collaboration with HBC Street Works Development, the result of the public's input into a new master plan reexamination that was unanimously adopted by the Planning Board and supported by the town council, and an input Street Works received from numerous community groups with whom they met prior to the proposal being introduced. Each of these planning milestones was discussed publicly and often, always with the goal of ensuring and encouraging resident engagement in the process. The outcome is a proposal that would deliver a healthy downtown for generations, diversify our housing stock, address longstanding traffic, parking, and congestion challenges, enable the town to invest more than $50 million in transformational public improvements that would otherwise not be feasible through traditional residential taxes, and bring unprecedented new sources of revenue to ease the tax burden on our residents. I recognize for some, this proposal is overly ambitious. For others, construction can't begin soon enough. But we can all agree that our intentions are aligned, while appreciating that opinions may diverge on how we get there. So with a commitment to moving this process forward, while assuring residents that there remains plenty of opportunity to weigh in during an evolving process that will take time, I do want to take this opportunity to provide you a timing on the anticipated immediate next steps. On January 11, there will be a Facebook Live at 6:30 PM. Street Works will be presenting modifications to their proposal based upon feedback they've received through their interactions with residents, as well as the input and questions as council has heard directly. The town's finance professionals will also provide a follow-up to last month's finance presentation and answer questions that have been received since that initial presentation last month. The live presentation will be recorded so it can be viewed at your convenience. On January 17, our next town council meeting at 8:00, Street Works and the town's planning and finance professionals will be presenting to the town council the updated One Westfield Place project and financial structure. On January 19, there'll be another Facebook Live at 6:30. The town and Street Works planning professionals will review and answer questions regarding the updated planning and design aspects of One Westfield Place. On January 31, at the next town council meeting, at the later town council meeting at 8:00, the town's planning and legal redevelopment professionals will provide a presentation to town council introducing the One Westfield Place redevelopment plan ordinance, which is also known as the RDP, which would enable the zoning for the project. The council will refer the RDP to the planning board to assess master plan consistency. On February 6, the planning board meeting at 7:30, the redevelopment plan will be presented to the planning board, who will determine if it is consistent with the master plan. And on February 14, at the town council meeting, public hearing and vote on the adoption of the One Westfield Place redevelopment plan if the planning board affirmed consistency with the master plan. So the adoption of redevelopment plan is the first step in a lengthy process. A vote on a redevelopment agreement detailing the project specifics and designating HBC Street Works Development as the developer would follow, with subsequent votes required on the financial agreement and bonding, as well as eventual full-site plan review and approval by the planning board. I share this to reiterate the transparency of the public process and the multiple opportunities for input in the weeks and months ahead. Every step of this process, from the 2023 Every step of this process, from the 2019 master plan formulation, to the many subsequent public meetings on redevelopment designations, to the future meetings and votes I've just detailed, as well as the previous center and, of course, questions for this council, is inclusive of public input and affords every resident the opportunity to be heard. Thank you sincerely to everyone who has engaged in this process to date, and if you have not yet done so, please take the time to become informed that you can provide credible, fact-based feedback and help shape our future. So I recognize that this project may seem like a lot of change for a community that has not historically welcomed it. Ultimately, we have a choice: To move Westfield forward and realize its full potential as a premier downtown community, or to accept the status quo and fall behind our peer communities. To reiterate my comments when this project was introduced, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to create the downtown we want our kids to inherit, one that serves as a national model for a post-COVID Main Street community dedicated to sustainability, walkability, inclusivity, and affordability, and one that meets the needs and desires of all of our residents and downtown businesses, including those who have been here for generations, as well as those who have just arrived. And very importantly, this proposal presents an unprecedented opportunity to ease the long-term tax burden for all of our residents. So in closing, I look forward to the promise of a new beginning that has emerged from the ravages of COVID. Our community has proven to be resilient, and I'm proud to affirm that the state of our town is strong with a limitless future if we have the courage to embrace it. It remains a privilege to be your mayor, and I ask that we once again approach this new year with gratitude for our families, community, and good health. God bless our great community and country. Thank you. Happy New Year. (APPLAUSE). Thank you all. Don't want to talk. You're tired of me yet? So now it's time for open discussion by citizens. Anyone may come up to the microphone and speak to the council on any subject on which we have jurisdiction. Please state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is John Schmidt. I currently reside at 669 and Boulevard in Westfield. On behalf of the Westfield Advocates for Responsible Redevelopment and over 1,200 residents who have to date signed a petition, I would like to read that petition to this council. "We, the undersigned, all residents of Westfield, New Jersey, ask the mayor, Town Council, and Planning Board to reconsider the ordinance 2198, redevelopment plan, and to reduce the scope and size of the One Westfield Place development project, and to rethink and provide alternative plans for the town's residents to review and consider. The proposed project is simply too large in scope and size and will irrevocably alter the small-town character that we all have learned to love and enjoy. The plans as proposed will obliterate the idyllic sightlines of trees, church steeples, and reduce the amount of open space that brings our residents to a sense of tranquility. The proposed project will increase traffic, pollution, and congestion. We believe that the actual impacts of the project, traffic, the pilots, business, real estate, neighborhood scale, are insufficiently investigated and are being downplayed by Street Works developers and our elected officials. We object to the Town Council's unreasonable overriding of zoning ordinances, non-competitive sale of town municipal lots to the developer, lack of a solid basis for this expansion and significant plan, lack of a full and fair public hearing to form a solid basis for the public decision-making, misuse of the local housing and redevelopment law, and misrepresentation of residents' responses to the master plan reexamination survey. By this petition, we request a well-considered and feasible long-term redevelopment plan that maintains Westfield's finances, neighborhood character, and quality of life. We urge that the developer, the mayor, and the Town Council, Town Administration, and other elected officials and appointed officials, one, pause further approvals and agreements related to ordinance 2198 and the Street Works redevelopment plan; and, two, provide alternative proposals, including other uses for the municipal lots, which reflect a sincere and collaborative process involving the input and ideas of all town stakeholders and residents, and reduces the size and scope of this presently-proposed oversized project." Thank you. (APPLAUSE).
My name is Christine Kiefer, and I reside at 603 Shadow Lawn Drive. I'd like to read for you tonight just some of the comments that are attached to this petition to rethink One Westfield Place. "This project will change the town's feel and charm too dramatically. More importantly, based on information shared by the town and developers, the proper studies have clearly not been conducted. Concerns by many residents over traffic, and even worse, major flooding due to future storms as they've become more intense over the years, have not been wholly and satisfactorily addressed. Westfield's residents deserve a say in the town they're invested in. This development is too much alongside all the other projects that have already been approved, some in spite of residents pleading reconsideration of scope and size." Continuing on, "This project is too much for our town, concentrated and too small an area. This project is way too large for our town. The entire development includes structures far too large for our residential community. We're suburban with small-town charm, not urban with canyon commerce and more apartments. Traffic is already terrible. This will exacerbate conditions. Not well planned. A project of this size and scope requires full transparency, documented community input, and a well-considered, feasible, long-term redevelopment plan that maintains Westfield's finances, neighborhood character, and quality of life. Westfield is overcrowded as it is, and this is a bad plan that will make traffic and congestion worse. I am a fourth-generation Westfield resident. I'm raising my kids here with my husband, who also grew up here, and we want them to have the wonderful childhood we both had here. If I wanted to raise my kids in an overly-developed and too-crowded Hoboken, I would live there." Why would we drastically change the parts of Westfield that people live here? Hudson Bay is ripping off Westfield. "Westfield's existing downtown core is looking woefully neglected and full of empty retail space. Nothing I see in the plan will significantly address this issue. We should be putting our efforts into improving our existing downtown, not massively overdeveloping around it. I don't see how that will help downtown, and I don't understand how we expect to fill all the new office, retail, and residential spaces when there's already so much new construction going on on North and South avenues, nor do I know that we, i.e. Westfield residents, want to. The only way to know if this is what the majority wants is to put this project up for a vote. I would like additional examination of the need for additional office space. I think the taxpayers have the right to their say. Put this to a vote." "We don't believe this is the right plan for our town. We are not opposed to a redevelopment plan. It must be a reasonable plan for our town. We are not West Hartford, and Westfield is not a depressed town. This is far too large of a project for our town. It needs to be reconsidered. We don't need any more stores or traffic. Flooding has become worse in the area as the heavy rain, and waters have nowhere to go or to be absorbed. This is completely changing the character of this town. A tremendous rise in population like this may bring money to town, but we lose the small, friendly feeling of our neighborhoods. Too large and out of character for Westfield." Thank you very much.
(APPLAUSE).
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Town Council Members. My name is Sandra Morrow. I have lived and worked here for 45 years, and I would not be here tonight if I didn't feel that my way of life was threatened. You will not see me or recognize me because I've never entered the political spectrum at all. But tonight, I wish to express the sentiments of some of the participants and residents of Westfield that were expressed online. Bridgette Gonzalez says, "I am opposed to this enormous project." Martha Fico, a resident, "There is too much redevelopment, and the size and the scope way too large. It is going to cause too much traffic and congestion and change for the worse, the feel of our town. It won't feel like a close-knit community, or even a community anymore. It will be urban, and I didn't move here 25 years ago to live in an urban area. Additionally, I don't feel the Town Council and Mayor have the right to do this without our vote." Tracy Moore says, "The problems associated with overdevelopment: overcrowding of schools, inadequate infrastructure." Laura Brockway, resident, "Westfield is and always has been a beautiful town. Overdevelopment will forever change the quality and character of our town. As a Realtor in town for over 20 years, I have helped hundreds of buyers relocate to our town from crowded cities like New York, Hoboken, and Jersey City because their desire is for a more suburban-type lifestyle. In towns like our beautiful town of Westfield, it is very disappointing to hear of the magnitude of this project, which will alter the tranquility of our town." From Elizabeth Farone, "Westfield must preserve the character of their rare and beautiful communities." From Kurt Ebler, "As a homeowner and taxpayer, I'd like to retain the quaintness of the town." Mike Gerliadi, "We are the town of Westfield, not the city of Westfield. If our town mayor wants to be a city mayor, she should move." Jessica Daglish, "Thank you, Westfield Advocates, for listening and giving us a voice about something as impractical as this when it's apparent that our local government will not." Regina White, "There is already too much traffic in Westfield, especially this area. Developing this site will only exacerbate the situation. Westfield does not need any more development than is already detracting from the charm our town once had." And from Diana Copolo, "The mayor and her council need to actually listen to the people." Thank you. 635 Forest Avenue in Westfield. (APPLAUSE).
Hi, I'm Marcy Bandelli, 209 Tuttle Parkway in Westfield. I'm actually really excited about this project. Being that I live on Tuttle Parkway, I directly get to see my vacant Lord &amp; Taylor every day, which is upsetting in itself, but it's time to move on and build something wonderful there. I love the idea of a town square. I think that's really cool. I know when I was looking for, I think we all probably, when we were moving from the city, we looked in Morris Town and Montclair and all kinds of different, cool towns, and they were a little busier than Westfield, and it was appealing. We just couldn't find the right house. And I don't think this project takes away a small-town feel at all, actually. I think it revitalizes this town, which has, you know, could, in certain areas, look tired. And when I was at the presentation in September and I saw all the gray parking lots, it was kind of shocking that we don't have greenery there, or we don't have pathways for our citizens to walk to the train station. This project, to me, feels really exciting. I'm not somebody who's afraid of change. I welcome change. I always have, and I look forward to it. So thank you all for working so hard on it. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Allison Carey. I live at 408 East Dudley Avenue. I have a couple more additional comments from the petition, but before I read that, I did want to make note that the last Facebook Live session on finances had 46 people there. So I understand social is a great way to reach people. We've got all these new Facebook Live sessions coming up, and you're missing a lot of the population who are not on Facebook. So I hope you look at some other ways to reach everybody with those very important discussions that are taking place in the upcoming weeks. Some additional comments from the petition. "This development is terrible. It's way too big and will only add to traffic issues. Pollution and the destroying of our charming, single-family home appeal. There's already been enough overdevelopment in Westfield, with all the new condos, apartments, and more to come on North Avenue, the proposed plans for Ferris Place. Why can't the town develop more green space, like a park, instead of more apartments? I do not understand how the mayor can think this is a great idea. Westfield will no longer be a charming colonial town. It's already losing that look to overdevelopment." Next comment. "When we initially moved to Westfield, a parking deck for our current residents would ruin the aesthetic of the town," end quotes. "Now, the overdevelopment and scope of the projects don't simply ruin the aesthetics, but transforms our quaint town into a city. With the taxes we pay, we should have a voice. Represent the voices of residents, not the developers." Next comment. "The overdevelopment of Westfield needs to stop." Next. "I'm extremely concerned about the redevelopment plans for Westfield." Next. "The reimagining of Westfield must be stopped before it's too late. We know the town we chose to move to. This is not it." Next comment. "It permanently changes my town for the worse for no reason." When did we ask for this? Next comment. "The overdevelopment of the town, not city, that I have called home since 1998 is astounding. While I recognize that the former Lord &amp; Taylor property is a private piece of land, and I agree that something needs to be done with that site, the North and South train lots, owned by the town, do not need to be included in this project. More than anything, the inclusion and development of these two town-owned parcels of land is what's raising many questions. Why is the town including these prime sections of real estate in a deal with the development of the Lord &amp; Taylor lots? Why were these very valuable parcels of land just handed over to Street Works? We certainly don't need more office space and empty apartments in town. How would these additional apartments be rented along with the hundreds of other apartments being built? North, South, Central, Springfield Avenues? The dream theory that all these apartments and offices will be filled by people walking, biking, living within the dwellings without using cars, and adding to the horrendous traffic already in town is seriously flawed. That is why I am adamantly opposed to this project and question how this project fits with the objectives of the master plan for Westfield. I visited the marketing site downtown and told the lovely, friendly representatives of Street Works my thoughts. They smiled and nodded appropriately, took a few notes, and I knew then that this project is a done deal, and my words were falling on deaf ears. This petition is my last hope to make my opinion known." Next. "This is not right-sized development for suburban Westfield. We can do better by paying closer attention to lower building heights, wider street setbacks, and embracing open spaces that are key to maintaining the charm and appeal of our small town." Next. "Our town does not have the infrastructure to support this many people. We are overpopulated as it is. To shoehorn more people into this area would be irresponsible and short-sighted." Next. "The infrastructure of our town is already strained due to other ill-advised housing projects. This would ruin the town." To shoehorn more people into this area would be irresponsible and short-sighted." Next. "The infrastructure of our town is already strained due to other ill-advised housing projects. This would ruin the town." Next. "Overblown plan, too much traffic." Next. "This overdevelopment is not what many residents want for this beautiful town." Next. "This project will drastically transform our beautiful quaint town. It will be a huge burden on our resources, and the existing infrastructure cannot support it." Next. "Traffic is already a big issue in town. This project is being pushed through too quickly without our residents' concerns being taken into consideration." Next. "We are rushing too much into remaking downtown." Next. "This needs attention." Next. "Don't want to see our town become the city of Westfield." Next. "This development is inappropriately configured for Westfield." Next. "I am against overdevelopment and traffic and reduction of quality life that it will bring." Next. "This is way too much. Seems like a giant overcompensation for missed opportunity from 20 years ago." Thank you.
Hi. Happy New Year, everyone, and thank you for all the hard work that you guys do. I know you're volunteers, and I appreciate it. My name is Drew Kellerman. I live at 534 Boulevard, one of the areas that is going to be very impacted by what is happening. I, for one, am a big fan of the project. I think that it is going to save our downtown. I don't want to see our downtown continue on the path that it has been for many, many years. I look to other downtowns in the state, and I see that they have lapped us. I have been living in Westfield for about 26 years. When I moved here, Westfield was a premier downtown. We looked for a house in Cranford. We looked in Westfield, and by far, Westfield was where I wanted to live because of the downtown. Now I look at Cranford's downtown, and for the past, you know, 10, 15 years, that downtown has just beaten us, and, you know, we're playing catch-up right now. I, for one, am happy to see us doing the things that it takes for our downtown to recover and thrive and move forward in the right direction. I am looking at a petition that has 1,200 signatures. To me, in a town of 30,000 people, that seems like a very small group of people. Not to, you know, not to minimize. There's people who are unhappy about that. I get it. People don't like change. Change is hard. But to me, that is not an overwhelming majority and a reason to slow down. I think it's, you know, there is input from people. I think you take the input and you make revisions, but that is not a majority and not a reason to slow it down or to stop making change. Change is hard. People don't want change in their backyard, and, you know, it's understandable. But, you know, the changes that have happened, I remember when I moved to this town, and every single time that there has been a move to make change in this town, there has been major pushback. And so, as a result, the former councils have stopped making change. And where did that get us? That got us a downtown with closed, shuttered businesses and has gotten other towns ahead of us. So I'm for change. I want to correct some misconceptions that I've heard tonight. I've heard that the town is overpopulated and overcrowded. The population of this town is less than it was 10 or 15 years ago. So that's not true. That downtown, that all of these extra buildings are going to be bad for our downtown businesses, they're going to bring extra foot traffic, and foot traffic is what drives downtown business. So what is the expression? A rising tide raises all ships? That's what can happen here. I heard also about how, you know, we need to have everybody vote on it. We need a referendum. It's actually not legal in the state of New Jersey, according to, there's a statute, NJSA 40A-12A-28. It is illegal to have a referendum on this matter. That is not, we'd be breaking the law to do that. So that's not an option here. Also, I don't understand why we're so upset about taking a flat-paved surface, which is the worst use of land. It gains us, it doesn't get us any tax revenue, it doesn't do anything for us. We're going to take that flat surface, and we're going to, part of it is going to go to parks, it's going to provide connectivity for this town, and we're going to take something that is almost useless for us, and we're going to turn it into something that's really great for the town. It's going to drive revenue. It's going to, we're going to have parks. We're going to have, it's going to be a town square, a town center. Like, to me, that's a great use of the property. And the last thing that I want to say is that without all of these other pieces of the puzzle, I don't know that Streetworks would be wanting to do this deal with us. We could have ended up with a Walmart or a, they could have sold the property to anybody that wanted to buy it. They could have sold it. They could have made it whatever kind of housing they wanted, and we could have had to build another school to accommodate whatever kind of housing they chose to build.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Hi. My name is David Kiefer. With my wife Christine and our family, we live at 603 Shadow Lawn Drive. Tonight, I want to talk to you about the issue of whether or not it makes sense to put the One Westfield Place project to a non-binding referendum. And what I mean more particularly is whether it makes sense to put a non-binding referendum to the town as to the discrete issue of whether or not the town should enter into the redevelopment agreement with Streetworks as it's currently constructed and construed. And I, for one, believe it should be put to a non-binding referendum. And I was disappointed to hear the mayor say at the last meeting that she or the council had no intention of doing that. But I was confused when she said that she'd received legal advice that a non-binding referendum, along with a binding referendum, are illegal or can't be done or are not legally permissible. And I think we just had our last resident suggest that a binding referendum is not permissible. Now, I am an attorney, and while I do not practice land use law, I am licensed in the state of New Jersey, and I looked into this a bit. And I want to share with the council some of the findings that I believe bear on this situation. It is true that a binding referendum is not permissible on a zoning ordinance, but NJSA 1930:37-1 permits a local governing body to put a non-binding public opinion question to the electorate on a ballot. The courts have held that this is allowed so long as the question that's being put to the people is one on which the body can actually act on. So to quote the appellate division, quote, "If the municipality has no power to act, it has no right to seek the voter's advice on whether to do so." So, for example, courts have not allowed, or rather upheld, county clerk's refusal to include a non-binding referendum on a ballot as to whether the town should adopt English as its official language, because passing such an ordinance is simply not within the borough's powers, makes sense. Conversely, a court have found that the non-binding referendum was proper to put to voters if it was asking whether an elementary school children should be going from one school to several different schools, because the Board of Education actually referred that matter to the municipal body, so they were authorized to act on the town's opinion. Now, I think the confusion comes into play with the municipal land use law, which, again, prohibits referendum for zoning ordinances. But the New Jersey Supreme Court, the highest court in our state, ruled on a similar issue in 1994. The case is called Great Atlantic Pacific Tea Company versus the Borough of Point Pleasant. Now, in this case, the Borough of Point Pleasant amended its zoning ordinance to permit retail use in its town center. Relying on that, AMP decided that they were going to open up a supermarket in town. After they had those plans, the town decided to put a, quote, "question" to the general election, to the populace concerning the repeal of the amendment to the zoning ordinance, which would undo the amendment around allowing retail use. The voters expressed their preference to have the zoning changed, and the council adopted it, and AMP, not surprisingly, sued, went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the issue was whether a non-binding referendum, otherwise authorized by NJSA 19:37-1, is prohibited on a zoning question under the municipal land use law, just like a binding referendum. The court drew a sharp distinction between referendum, which are binding, and non-binding referendum. And I want to quote the court here as to the way they refer to non-binding referendum. Again, non-binding referendum are allowed under NJSA 19:37-1. Here's what the court had to say. NJSA 19:37-1 authorizes a governing body to ascertain public sentiment before that body acts. It provides a method to gauge public opinion, which the governing body may consider or ignore in determining appropriate cause of action. Bottom line is that the court held that the municipal land use law does not prevent the municipality from submitting a non-binding referendum to ascertain public sentiment on a zoning amendment. I've seen nothing further that would suggest that a non-binding referendum is somehow not allowed in this instance. I could be wrong. I don't practice this law for a living, but I haven't seen it, nor has this body or any of the savants on Facebook told me what other law would prevent it. So I say this to the council to say, I think it's allowed.
Thank you, and you're out of town.
But furthermore, if I may finish my sentence. But I think you should do it, because I think it'll prevent the political polarization that you seem to be worried about, that our state senators seem to be worried about. Let the people on that petition be heard on a vote. And if it's as bad as she said, and no one agrees to it, you'll get what you want.
Sorry, you're out of time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Carl Salisbury. I live at 715 Hanford Place. I hadn't planned to speak tonight. I just had planned to come to the reorganization meeting. And so, at the risk of turning tonight's forum into an appellate court argument, I did feel the need to rise and to talk about NJSA 40A-12A-28. The argument, and I think it was sort of an appellate argument that you heard just now, relates to the zoning ordinance. And at the risk of taking calls to Newcastle, because I expect that this body has done its research on NJSA 40A-12A-28, that ordinance is very straightforward, very clear, and it provides that in connection with a redevelopment project, which is what this is, a referendum is prohibited, quote, "notwithstanding any other law to the contrary." That means notwithstanding zoning ordinance laws, which may provide for binding or non-binding referendum on this question. NJSA 40A-12A-28 makes no distinction whatsoever between a binding and a non-binding referendum. In 2013, the New Jersey Supreme Court affirmed a town clerk's refusal to put a referendum on the ballot having to do with a bond ordinance relating to a redevelopment project. And the Supreme Court said in that case that NJSA 40A-12A-28 is, quote, "unequivocal" on this question, and it is unequivocal that a referendum is not allowed on a redevelopment project, notwithstanding any other law to the contrary. So I just wanted to stand and express that view and that opinion and the results of the research that I have done. Reasonable minds can always differ about these kinds of projects. And I understand that change is hard, and I understand that people have differing opinions on a project of this kind, which results in that kind of change. But I want the council to know that there are voices out there, such as mine, and people out there, such as I, who can't wait to have the construction begin. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your service, and good evening.
Hello, I'm back. Remember me from the turf? Susan Goodman, 322 Orinda Circle. I'm here in support of the Westfield Advocates for Responsible Development. I've lived in this town for close to 40 years, so I've lived here longer than most of you. And I'd like my town to stay a nice town. So I'm going to read to you several people who signed the petition just four weeks ago. And my husband will read one where people signed it just three weeks ago. So as more and more of us get to the Westfield Viewing Center and we see what you have planned for us, the fantasy that will ruin our town, the momentum is getting bigger and bigger. And I think that us as residents, you should listen to us and not Streetworks and HBC. And I know what you're up against in trying to keep Target out of there, but maybe we're better off with the Target than what you have planned. As I said to David Contract, you're selling the soul of my town for a replacement of Lord &amp; Taylor and a parking garage. Catherine Kay, "I went to One Westfield Place, heard the presentation, and feel we definitely need to rethink this." Edward Korecki, "This proposed plan will urbanize a community that has flourished on its suburban appeal of fine, single-family homes, complemented by a highly-rated school system, a convenient train station, and a modest and attractive downtown footprint. The master plan provides a guide, not a mandate, to maintain and improve our community. It does not dictate an expansion of the downtown with office buildings and more retail, nor does it mandate providing developers with the rights to public property. How does this plan improve the state of the current core downtown bounded by North Avenue, Broad Street, Central Avenue, Elm, and Quimby Streets? Show the community the metrics, the details of how the core will flourish. Pictures and models are marketing tools. They don't represent the facts that Westfield deserves before moving forward." And before I read another one, I know several people who had businesses downtown, and they all closed up and left, including Arthur Treat, who was here for years, because the person who owned the property wanted to raise the rent to such an astronomical amount that they couldn't survive. How does putting more retail space and commercial space here going to help those that are in the immediate downtown area? You have to solve that problem, not putting in more space. Suzanne Schultz, "This is overwhelming for our town. In the last few years, traffic has become awful. As I stated before, traffic studies do not capture all the frustrations of driving around town. You are not looking at the total trip of the driver. Not to mention, this project disrupts the charm of the town. No one is against appropriate development." No, none of us are. We need some development, and we need the Lord &amp; Taylor space to be taken care of, and we need parking, but we don't need all of this that you're giving us. This is too much, and yes, I've been in the informational sight, very sleek, but not Westfield. Four weeks ago, Michael Constantuno signed it. Because I don't want our town to become a city. Four weeks ago, William Heinbockel signed it. With the existing glut of empty office space in New Jersey and the rapidly growing inventory of new apartment and condominium projects underway in Cranford, Clark, Scotch Plains, Fanwood, Mountainside, Garwood, Springfield, and here in Westfield, I question what benefit this proposal provides our community without first understanding the impact ongoing development projects other places around our community will have on us. Moving forward with a project of this scale at this time is reckless and not wise. Maria Conti, "The traffic impact will be enormous, and the assumption that pilot funding somehow solves any taxpayer burden seems flawed." Carolyn Malilo, "This is a suburban town with enough traffic congestion as it is. We do not need an inner-city environment." Donna Molinelli, "I agree. We should slow down." Donna Molinelli, I agree, we should slow down. Denise Parati, I have lived here for 30 years and have seen traffic build over time, and with this huge redevelopment, it will just be unbearable and will destroy the small-town feel.
I'm sorry, Susan, you're out of time. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one other thing to say. You think that a mother is going to park in the garage on South Avenue, go with a baby and a stroller and a five-year-old holding onto her, go under the tunnel to shop downtown by Broad Street?
I'm sorry, you're out of time. Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't know if I could get here tonight, so I'm a little scattered with my thoughts, so forgive me, but I'm going to just mention a couple of things, and then I have a challenge for the council and the mayor, everyone on the council who plans to vote for this, that is. First, Mayor, early on, you said that you guys... Oh, I'm so sorry. Carrie Murphy, I'm at 502 Cotting Road. Early on, you had mentioned that you guys were all overwhelmingly voted in, and that's true. Although overwhelming, I don't know about that. But my question has been and always will be, had you shared the extent of these overdevelopments with the taxpayers, this and the Ward Project, I wonder if the outcome would have been the same. That's always something that sticks in my mind, and I'm sure a lot of other people as well. I hear that we're all cautiously optimistic. We're not cautiously optimistic. We're pretty much against the plan at the scope that it is currently at. Non-binding referendum vote will take all the mystery away of who is for it and who isn't in the town. Non-binding referendum vote is legal, allow it. We will proceed as the vote outcome predicts, or whatever the vote outcome is, and you should do the same. Anyway, that aside, so it seems to me that you guys are doing a great job of listening to the developers and not so much the taxpayers, which I still can't wrap my head around. I wish you would do a better job of that. Anyway, there's a lot of people asking questions tonight, a lot of people mentioning things you'll hear a lot more. I was going to be one of them, but I got to thinking about the project, so hear me out and humor me. I have a challenge for you. It's safe to say the plan's being built around the idea, or part of it, that Westfield residents will, or you would like them, to start biking more, walking, scootering, ride-sharing, et cetera. It's almost encouraging that, thus relieving the traffic that the project will bring and that already exists. I think that's fair to say, because I've heard that quite a lot. While I'm of the belief that it sure sounds like a great idea in theory and in Fantasyland, it's, you know, sounds great, but in practice, it's unrealistic for the average working taxpayer who has children. So I'm proposing to you, any council members who are going to vote yes for this, and you mayor, to lead by example. For one month, starting on Monday, given the development is being pushed through at the speed of light, I'm asking you all to hang up the keys to your car, park your car in your garage, pump up the bike tires, get the bike tires, snow chains ready, get your sneakers dusted off and dig out the snow boots, get the raincoats ready, and the parkas as well. If you have a scooter, charge it. If you don't have an Uber or Lyft app, get one. For one month, I'm asking that you lead by example. You do what you're asking us to do by pushing this development through. Forgo your car. Walk, bike, scooter, or ride to the market. Walk, bike, scooter, or ride to meet friends for coffee. Walk, bike, scooter, or ride-share to your next business meeting. To pick up your children from daycare, though many of you, it doesn't apply to you, but it does apply to a lot of residents in this town. Walk to, you know, get to the doctor's appointment. Walk, bike, or scooter to rush your child to a sick doctor appointment. I mean, the list goes on. I want you to do that, and I want you to do it when you go shopping, just lead by example. The best part is, and I know that, Mayor, you love to have, you know, Facebook Live, we could have some people follow you guys around throughout the day, taking videos, just so you can show us how easy it is to do that, to put away our car and use all these other forms of transportation to get around town. So this will be awesome. Our fearless leaders will not only lead by example for a month, we can watch them. We can watch them. You guys can post how easy it is. You can show us how easy it is to live without our car. Just think of the other green awards you might win, the gallons of gas you'll be saving. Show the taxpayers that it's an easy adjustment to live without our car. I ask you to live for one month, how you are asking residents to live when this development is complete. It sounds absurd. I'm sure it does. I'm sure it sounds absurd, and I doubt any of you will do it, but this is how absurd this overdevelopment sounds to us, especially when you're saying it will relieve traffic because more people will be utilizing all of these other forms of transportation to get around town. We live here. This is our life. It's not vacationhood. We need our cars to get around. Most families have two or three cars. They're not just going to automatically try and park something and not use it anymore. Non-binding referendum vote, Mayor. Non-binding referendum vote is the only fair, just way of finding out what residents want.
Thank you very much.
And everybody keeps saying, we don't know who the majority is. Find out through the vote and proceed.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Mayor, for helping us achieve something which other administrations have not. I sat here and listened to John Bramnick, a very astute guy, not only a comic, but a very astute senator. Senator Bramnick said at the beginning of this meeting that we should get together rather than be apart. And I've listened to both sides of the arguments here very carefully. I've heard the legal battle between whether a non-binding referendum is legal or not legal. I don't really know whether it is, but I do know the difference between ethics and legalities, and I think you could all discern that that important point relating to this project, as well as some other projects that you will in the past and will in the future consider, is important, that you understand what the townspeople really want. Now, 1,200 people is not a full ballot of Westfield, but the 10 or 15 people that are on either side of the fence here are not either. So I ask again, Mayor, I spoke to you personally, a non-binding referendum is not all and none. There could be a third ballot which says some. These are the other tactics put in by some of the other townspeople. The amount of traffic will be astronomical. There's almost definitely a financial implication for this town's political leadership with zero bidding to other developers. Our leaders have a different vision for Westfield and the majority of the residents who want to remain a suburban colonial town. Our entire land state is continually being altered with one developer after another, just going to raise our taxes even more, even more traffic. The mayor and council are not acting in the best interest of Westfield residents. Westfield is a suburban community. We don't want to be overbuilt. Too big, no traffic mitigation. This massive project is a quality-of-life issue for most people of Westfield. How will Westfield support more businesses when we can't even keep stores occupied downtown? I'm not a legal person. I was in healthcare for many, many years. But I ask this council, as well as our mayor, to give an option to vote on a non-binding referendum, and in that, not put it all or none, as we spoke, but Twitter some, and give us that option. Thank you. Stephen Goodman, 322 Orinda Circle, Westfield.
Tony Laporta, 409 North Chestnut Street, and a former member of the town council. Happy New Year to you all. So a short statement about the referendum. You know, I'm in favor of it, the non-binding referendum. It's perfectly legal. It makes no sense to confuse a non-binding referendum and a binding referendum. And those that have spoken, that have written about a referendum not being legal, not being permitted by law, they're getting it confused. And we'll have more to say about that in the next couple of weeks, but I didn't really come down here today to talk about One Westfield Place or the referendum. There's going to be more time for that. What I want to talk about is the way the town council meetings are run. And I think this is a perfect time, being it's the reorganization meeting, and being that I served on the town council a few years back. I was the youngest member of the town council back then, so no times have really gone. Okay. From what I have noticed, what I've observed, the mayor controls the town council meetings. No one gets to speak at the town council meetings. The mayor has shut down people that I have seen here. I saw Councilman Contract being shut down. I saw Councilman Liguipo being shut down. However, when some council members agree with the mayor, the mayor lets them speak. Now, First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees freedom of speech. That was so important. Every member here, including yourself, Mayor, has been elected by members of the town of Westfield, and they represent, they are the voice of those people that have voted for them. And I don't understand how you can not allow these people to speak. When I was on the town council, it was a little more democratic. I sat where Councilwoman Mackey sits, and I got into a few disagreements with Mayor Booth at that time. But Mayor Booth always allowed me to speak, and he allowed everyone to speak. And people came up here, in those days, they could speak for 10 minutes. You reduce it to five minutes, which I don't think is proper either. Also, the agenda. Who sets the agenda? Mayor, I think you set the agenda. When I was on the town council, any member of the town council called the town administrator and said, in those days, it was Ed Gacko, "Ed, I want to put something on the town for the agenda for the conference session." It was allowed. Now, Ed would say to me at times, "Well, you know, we talked about this, we voted on this like two years ago. Let me tell you what you don't know." And at times, I would say, "Yeah, you're right. That makes sense, so scratch that." But that's how we got things done. Members of the town of Westfield, the citizens, would go to a council member and say, "I need this talked about." And that went on the agenda. So I urge you, Mayor, to rethink the way you run these council meetings. I don't think it's democratic at all. I don't think it's open, and I don't think it's transparent. I would love to hear these people speak about what they actually feel and what they are hearing back from their constituents. They were elected, and I know you're going to say, or someone's going to say, "The town charter says the mayor runs the meeting." I believe you are the first mayor in the town of Westfield's history that runs a town council meeting like this. I don't think the people that wrote that charter envisioned that a mayor would shut down any discussion by elected officials. So with that, not much more I can say. I think you know exactly how I feel, and I really hope, Mayor, that you really take this into consideration. I think it would bring the town together more, and it would... You can't run this as a chief executive, chairman of the board with a weak board. Corporations run that way. This is town government, a democracy. You are the mayor. You get one vote. You are in charge of running the meeting, which have to be fair. You have to let these people speak. And please, don't call out of order someone when they want to say something to a resident that's up here. Anyway, that's how I feel, and I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Frank Fusaro, 422 Stanley Avenue, here in Westfield. I've been a 57-year resident of Westfield, which I believe is longer than any of one sitting on the dais tonight by far. I hadn't planned on speaking this evening, however, after hearing some of the other people speak, I decided to come up and say a few words. Addressing Ms. Kellerman's statement earlier this evening that the petition that's being circulated only has 1,200 signatures and that it should be ignored, I'd like to remind both the mayor and the council that only 790 people filled out your master plan survey. And of those 790 people, only 350 of them supported a mixed-use development, which is exactly what you are proposing now. 350. We have three times that amount of signatures on the petition currently. In addition, can you please, I would appreciate if you could please correct the public record to reflect that $73 million of the $210 million pilot payment is being used for the debt service, thus resulting in a net of approximately $140 million in pilot revenue over 30 years to the town. Not 200, 140, simple mathematics. In closing, I would ask that you please provide us with the amount of money that the town has spent on redevelopment consultants to date. That would be in addition to the $640,000 in redevelopment consulting fees, which you are approving tonight by resolution. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, town council members. Happy New Year. Craig Casco, 434 Everson Place. I'd like to play a recording, a video that was on YouTube after I had approached this microphone in the last administration. I had concerns about what had happened in this courtroom, in this council chambers that led up to the referendum in 2004. There was a gentleman that stood at this microphone to address the town council. He was against the parking deck, as were many others. And when he walked away from the microphone, he was greeted by the parking director, who was a captain of the special police, and two police officers, and they subsequently put him into handcuffs because he had a parking warrant out of another jurisdiction. As I've reminded this council before, we did not make arrests on parking warrants. We would go and knock on doors on a Sunday, as per Chief Scuddy, and he would say, ask them to come down to headquarters, don't embarrass their family, let them settle the warrant downtown. But this was going on for several meetings. Names were being run illegally through state police computer checks on people that were against the parking deck. So when the parking referendum came to be in 2004, people were disgusted. They were disgusted at the way the town council was handling the issue. A gentleman just before me, Tony Laporta, had mentioned about how you guys interact. And back when I spoke at the microphone, I had confronted Jim First. He was a sitting councilman at that time. And unbeknownst to him, I had been made aware of the fact that an email was sent around, and in that email, he had joked about, "Why don't we have the police follow those that are against the parking deck?" Well, what happened in this courtroom, and Mr. Abate, a lawyer, being arrested on a parking warrant, basically solidified my belief that he wasn't joking, although he did say it was a joke. What transpired was Jim First began to berate me, and it wasn't while I stood here at the microphone. It was after I sat down. I didn't have a chance to respond. I tried to respond from the audience, but I was gavelled out of order by then-Mayor Skibitzky. In this video, audio, which I'm going to play, you can listen to exactly what he says, and you'll see that it's out of order.
And not once in that seven years has the comments in this chamber gotten so low that you would come to that microphone and insinuate that I sent an email that asked someone to run background checks on another individual is a complete falsehood. It has no basis in fact. And I hope that the reporters in this room report that not once ever did I, or to my knowledge, anyone on this council, ever request that background checks be run on individuals who came to that microphone... Your time is over. Who came to that microphone to speak, to voice their opinion, which is their right under the laws of this country and under the policies of this town council. And for you to come to that microphone and to allow people to insinuate and to allow people to believe that an email that I sent asks someone to run background checks on people is a new... Seven years of my being on this town council. The 7/14 is the lowest point of the seven years that I have ever sat on this highest grade. It is ridiculous. It's disgusting. Mr. Casco, Mr. Casco, you're out of order. Mr. Casco, you're out of order. You're out of order, Mr. Casco.
That was from TV 36. You can see how I was treated. I've never seen anybody... I've never seen anybody at this microphone be treated by this town council in that way. And if you notice, he flipped it. He said, "I never, ever told anyone to do background checks." I never accused him of that. I had mentioned the email that he sent to other people in town that people against the deck should be followed. So he flipped it. As far as the petition that's out there, it's flawed. I was able to get on today on four different devices, my iPad, my computer, my work phone, and my own cellphone. You can log four different votes by one person. It's flawed. I understand, and I, I totally understand what the people who are against this project feel. I've lived here myself 50 years. I've watched towns change.
I'm sorry, Mr. Casco, you're out of time.
I'm out of time, I'll be back. I, I support the project, I've watched this town suffer over the last 20 years. Please keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Happy New Year. Carla Benacci, 603 Lawrence Avenue. I wasn't going to speak this evening, I don't have prepared comments, but I feel I need to respond to a lot of what I'm hearing. First of all, our groups, Westfield Advocates and Residents for Westfield, are very concerned and involve citizens who care about the town. We do like change, we do want to change. I'm an architect and planner myself. The issue with this particular development and how it's been presented is that it's too big, too large. And what we mean by that is that, in terms of density and height and scale, is that our buildings in this town are three stories, 40 feet tall. We have a couple of anomalies, we all realize that, but this proposal has buildings that are 60 to 70 feet tall, six stories. We don't have anything like that. No 10-foot street wall setback is going to change the perception that you have cut back the light and the air and the skyline that we have. So what we really ask is that you cut this down, that you have the developer give you an alternative that reduces the scale. In my line of business, we always have options from low to high. We have a sensitivity analysis, we look at the ranges, we understand the business risks, the real estate risks, and we make certain prudent decisions based on the market. I personally haven't seen any of that in any of the material that you've presented. And really, that's all we're asking. And we are asking for transparency, we're asking to be involved, because as Carrie and others said, we live here every day, we commute. We don't want our commuting convenienced by parking garages. We'd like you to reduce the scale. We're very serious about this. It seems you're pushing it through very quickly. You spent three years, you're giving us about three, four months. That's a bit unfair. I really wish that through your process, that about a year into it, you had opened it up to the public for consensus building. That's true community engagement. And that's what I think is the shortfall here on this project. So you are going to continue to hear from us, even though you're jamming us, and I really wish you would think about it, the scale of this development and its relationship to the existing downtown. Thank you.
Liz Mahalan, 1029 Harding Street. Want to thank all of you for all of your hard work on this project and for all you've done for the town over the past few years. And by the way, the room looks phenomenal. Um, I was listening to a lot of people come up and, and listening to their words, and I couldn't help but notice that they kind of rang familiar. So I just thought I would read a few comments from a letter that was posted recently. And it goes like this. "It's amazing that Westfield struggles with positive change today as much as it did 62 years ago, when the town council met to take a vote on a controversial zoning change that would significantly alter the town. The council was set to extend the business district some 600 feet along North Avenue to allow for the construction of a $2 million Hanes &amp; Company department store with 100,000 square foot of retail space. Some Westfield residents were aghast at the idea that their quiet residential community would be turned into a major shopping destination." And here are some of the comments. Quote, "I was first attracted to Westfield because of its residential character, that it was more like a small town than suburbia," Ms. J.C. Simon wrote in a letter to the Westfield leader. "I seriously question whether Westfield will remain the kind of town we know it to be if Hanes is to attract the great numbers of shoppers that, from surrounding communities." She was also concerned about the traffic the department store would generate. "Is Hanes going to be a good thing for Westfield residents? Will the convenience of shopping at Hanes compensate for the increased traffic congestion, which must result, and the strong possibility of the adjacent areas being rezoned for businesses?" Other residents also expressed concern about the governing process, the lack of transparency, the Republican Town Council, the hastiness of the zoning change, the timing of the meetings, and some even called for a referendum. Quote, "We have heard that Hanes is coming to Westfield, and some of the points in favor of the move. However, there have been no real opportunity for the residents to hear the unfavorable points, which also come with this move. Both sides must be heard, so that its good and bad may be weighed, and a thoughtful decision be reached." Beryl Osborne. Quote, "It is true that a public meeting was held," Osborne allowed. "However, residents were informed that this meeting, by an article published in the Leader, only four days before the meeting was scheduled. In addition, the meeting was held on a Monday evening. This conflicted with Westfield Shopping Night and Adult School." Helmut Schomol wrote that the town council should be absolutely certain of the wishes of the town before committing to the development. Quote, "The only way this can be done is by publicizing the pros and cons, and then giving the citizens the opportunity to express their views by a referendum if necessary." Schomol wrote, "I know this would take time, and Hanes &amp; Company are in a hurry, but we people who live in Westfield need not be forced into a hasty decision to please any business interest." Used car lots and ice cream bars are going to come to the north side, was another concern. Now, we all know that that didn't happen. But what I find striking is that we're hearing literally the same exact statements from the 1960s, the same exact statements that Cranford heard when they developed their south side, the same exact statements from the ice rink, the same exact statements from ShopRite, the same exact statements from anything that we try to do in a town. And it's normal. I don't think that it's abnormal, and that's why it happens at every town, every time there's something new. But what I want to say to you is that there is a huge, large portion of people that I speak to that are fully for this, and I also think that there would be more people reaching out if they were against this. I think that this is phenomenal, and I don't think that you did this because you wanted us to bicycle ride to town. I think that's ludicrous. I do realize that this was done to support our downtown, because we all know that for decades this downtown has been in a cycle of boom and bust. And we know that business employees are the ones that support our downtown on the weekdays, just like Manhattan. When the businesses kept their people home, the stores in Manhattan shuttered, the restaurants shuttered, people are coming back, the stores are opening again. Our residents are going to go back to work, we're going to lose the little that we had gained from them being home. And I applaud you for thinking so smartly and so efficiently. So thank you very much, and I beg of you to stand strong, because there is a much larger population out there that just are afraid to come to this microphone. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Sharon Stockwell. I live at 100 Nelson Place. It, um, it's very nice to be up here this evening. It's been many, many years since I've actually spoken at this microphone. And I wanted to thank all of you for all of your work and how you have followed through with this project step by step, in a very incremental way, keeping people informed at each step of the way, and providing the information that's needed to continue to move forward. It does bother me when people say that they don't have information, that they are unaware of something, because I feel that you have provided that information. And I would encourage people to continue to look at the schedule, especially the schedule that you released this evening of future meetings and all of the information that will be coming in the future. Um, I, I have not spoken at this microphone in many, many years. The last time that I did speak at the microphone was during the administrations of Mayor McDermott and also of Mayor Skibitzky. And I just want to say that I think the way that you have handled this has been very professional, very appropriate. There are times that, yes, maybe you have to set limits on someone's time or redirect an issue, but that is just something that is part of the process. And I assure you that in the other administrations, that was part of the process as well. I experienced the same thing that Greg Casco just talked about a few minutes ago. I experienced being shut down by former administrations by having my time limited. I was a witness to someone being arrested that evening after they spoke at the microphone. I was a witness to people being investigated, having background checks run on them. I was also personally harassed online during that time as well. So I just want you to know, I don't see any of those things happening here. And I assure you that I'm very pleased with the way in which you are handling this and how you were running your meetings. And I thank you very, very much for all of your time and all of your hard work, because I do know that you are volunteers. Thank you again.
This will be a first. So I heard a lot of things. I'm John Mahalan, I live at 1029 Harding. A bit about me, and I would gladly take the challenge to bicycle ride tomorrow. These are the things I want. I want the Lord &amp; Taylor fixed, I want a 55 and older place. I am 100% behind this. I don't want to rake my leaves, clean my gutters, replace my air conditioners. I'd like to stay here. I lived in Hoboken for 19 years. I'm sad to say, this town will never be that. It is, Hoboken is one square mile, 140 bars and restaurants. It's a nice place, it's not Westfield. This is why I moved here. If you give me a place that I can go, I'm 55 and older, and I can live, breathe, not have to do all this maintenance thing, my kids can come and visit, I can walk to town. If you live in a 55 and older place, or a place close to town, or a place like Hoboken, you never touch your car. A car is the biggest pain in the ass, sorry. If you can walk to town, you can walk to a liquor store, you can walk to a bar, you can walk to a restaurant, your car stays home, you're perfectly safe, green. I have a nice bicycle, I have a nice dog, I can walk around. I am 100% behind this. And what I'm 100% behind this is that if Lord &amp; Taylor decided, and I heard someone say, a Walmart, a Target, maybe a Chick-fil-A, what the hell? If they decided to do that, we would miss the opportunity, we'd have all those things and an empty, flat parking lot. What are we going to do with that? I drive past there every day at 7:30. 50 to 70% filled, max. That's it. I drive to work, I have to drive to the train station, park my car. If you give me my 55 and older place, guaranteed, I'll bike ride and walk, I'll take the challenge. That's what I want. All right? I mean, I just want something simple. This is, to me, I have been to places where they embellished the new with the old, the bars and restaurants, the old town, this and that, it works together. If you've never seen it, I get your fear. I get your fear beyond belief. But if you go to a place that has this and see how people live and stop saying, "Oh, the town will be Hoboken," it will never be Hoboken. Just give that up. It's 1,200 people, it's simple math. No, it's not. 6,500 people voted for you. I was one of them. 1,900 for you. That's simple math. I am behind you, we are behind you. Give me my 55 and older place. Thank you.
A good bit of levity to, oh.
Hi, I'm Darren McCauley, 302 Prospect. Um, I'm, I'm here to meet some of you, because I'm on the bike council. And I've been here, it's been about a year. I was 12 years in Portland, Oregon. Um, so, you know, I could move back to where I came from, you know, but I am a New Jersey native. Um, and biking in this town is subpar. I really feel like there should be a bike parking spot as close, if not closer, than any car parking spot. And that also said, I walked here tonight, I brought my flashlight, because it's also very dangerous to be a pedestrian in this town. I walked to the bagel shop on South Side today through the massive parking lot that we are defending to keep. But anyway, yeah, I just wanted to say hi, and I wanted to talk to some of you later after meeting, so, thank you.
Okay. Um, well, so here are no further comments. I close this portion of the meeting, and I'm sorry you have to hear from me again, because I do want to address a lot of the comments. Let me give me a second to figure out the order in which I want to do this. So, um, uh, let's see. You know, let me address the referendum thing first. I just want to get this off the table. And I get it, and I understand why you all want it, but I'm going to tell you why it's not happening. And first of all, and so pardon me, because I don't want, there is some misconstruing of my comments apparently at the last town council meeting, so I'm going to read this, and this is in the FAQ, because I don't want anybody to misconstrue what I'm going to say. And I, you know, and I do want to thank, I know Mr. Keeper, I appreciate your comments, you're not a land use attorney, and it is related to redevelopment, which you didn't mention, and I think Carl Sansfield, who knows his land use, said it was. And so everybody's a lawyer when it comes to this, and we obviously have a lot of people guides, but I'm just going to give you the flat-out story on the referendum. "Will the town place its proposed redevelopment before the voters in a referendum?" No. State law expressly prohibits referendums for redevelopment projects. Redevelopment being the key word, not zoning change, redevelopment. And even if state law did allow them, the Westfield Town Charter, the Westfield Town Charter does not expressly permit them either, and thus the governing body has no authority to authorize one. The local housing and redevelopment law makes clear that a referendum related to a redevelopment project cannot be held, and it makes no distinction between binding versus non-binding referendums. Therefore, neither is permitted. Under the law, we've heard a lot about tonight, 12A-28, "No redevelopment plan," end quotes, "shall be submitted to or adopted by initiative or referendum. Likewise, land use law prohibits any type of zoning decision to be submitted to or adopted by initiative or referendum." In addition, the town, and this is very importantly, has been unable to identify any municipality in the state that has ever held a referendum on a redevelopment project, binding or non-binding, period. And there's lots of redevelopment going on in this state. We're actually a little late to the party in that regard. So additionally, the power to conduct referendums may generally only be granted by the state legislature. Westfield is one of only 11 municipalities that operate under a special charter form of government. Of those, only four have the power of referendum, Westfield is not one of them. Referendums are unlawful for redevelopment projects because of the complexities involved in bringing them to fruition, which is why local governing bodies are empowered to make such important economic development decisions on behalf of their constituents. As I said previously, and I know Mr. Goodman mentioned this, but a referendum, and the way they have to be written, is an up or down vote. So it doesn't, this is why it's not legally allowed, because it does not allow voters to favor certain aspects of a project or weigh in with constructive comments to inform the proposal. The law recognizes that complex redevelopment projects, such as One Westfield Place, simply don't lend themselves to an up or down vote, which is why it cannot and will not be considered in Westfield. Now, you ask, "So if a referendum is impossible, how do town officials hear feedback, and how will that feedback be incorporated into One Westfield Place?" Well, the leadership, and I think you have seen, has prioritized a comprehensive and more Now, you ask, so if a referendum is impossible, how do town officials hear feedback, and how will that feedback be incorporated into One Westfield Place? Well, the leadership, and I think you have seen, has prioritized a comprehensive and multi-pronged public engagement process for One Westfield Place to ensure that your input and that of business owners is heard and informs the ultimate proposal. As you know, it began in 2019 with a publicly-driven master plan reexamination, and even though people like to quote the numbers on who surveyed, but God bless his soul, but Jeff Janota, who ran from H2M, who drove that master plan process, who we chose specifically because he was a long-term Westfield resident, said that they were just amazed at the level of engagement in the master plan process for our community relative to others. And so it was above, greater than average participation, thousands of public comments shaped the document, which was unanimously adopted by the planning board and supported by the town council. There was nobody from the public that has ever come out and challenged the master plan. This master plan reexamination was then provided to Street Works at the start of their planning process to ensure that their ultimate proposal was driven by the master plan recommendations. And I have said from this day as multiple times, I held up the master plan, and people asked what Street Works was doing, I said, read this. This is the instruction manual they've been given to come up with their proposal. I said then, throughout their planning process, Street Works proactively sought input from a broad array of community groups with whom they met prior to proposal being introduced. Now, since this introduction, there have been ongoing opportunities afforded to all residents by both Street Works and town officials to provide public feedback, ask numerous questions in various online and in-person forums, and receive context and see renderings at the preview center. As a result of that resident input and ongoing feedback from town officials, and to your point, Ms. Spinachi, they will be making modifications to their proposal, and that will be communicated to the public on January 11th next week. So the town remains determined and confident that the open and collaborative process guided by the best-in-class team of redevelopment professionals who are working on our behalf will deliver a final proposal to the community that reflects best planning principles and financial risk mitigation measures, is informed by robust market data, parking assessments, and traffic impact studies, and reflects the desires of the community at large. That is on our FAQs. That is the definitive answer for non-binding or binding referendum. And so I'm going to hopefully put that one to rest. So to answer, just go back to some of these other ones. And I'm going to get to your comments in the petition in just a second. Mr. Reporter, regarding your comments about the meeting, you know, my job as mayor, anybody can speak at any time, they just need to, they just need to ask for, raise their hand and ask to speak. That's the way it works with Robert's rules. My goal is to keep an orderly meeting, a respectful agenda that keeps it on time, and anybody can raise their hand and speak at any time that they want. And regarding the agenda setting, I don't set the agenda. Jim Gilde sets it with the input from all of the chairs and the committees. I see the agenda when everybody else does, and that's when it goes out to our pack on Fridays. So let me just address this petition for a little bit, and your comments, which I greatly, I really, really do appreciate. I do wish that many of these people had come and spoken for themselves. It does seem a little odd to me that you're reading comments from other people, and that's what this is all about. So if you could get people to come and speak on their behaves, that would be fantastic. And I know, Ms. Carey, I think you mentioned about Facebook Live viewership, and you're concerned. There might have been only 46 viewers live, but you don't need Face, we record those, and they're posted on our webpage. You do not need Facebook to watch them. And so they can be watched by everybody at any time, and we actually found that people much prefer to be able to have, watch them at their convenience in their own home and get the best way to get information. And I will just say this about, it's a two-way street. Residents have an obligation to be informed. We can put out all the information we want in the world, and I think we do. Actually, I had someone call me last week asking about radical transparency, because that's what they're seeing coming from One Westfield Place, relative to other communities in New Jersey. So residents have an obligation. So if you chose not to participate in the master plan and then observe the outcome, that's on you. If people chose not to be informed about this project because they haven't taken advantage of all the information that's available, that's on you. We can't help that. So I just ask, you all have a civic duty to be informed as well, and we have an obligation to make sure that you have all the information available in front of you. And that's kind of what I want to speak about as it relates to the petition. And I generally mean thanks for your engagement, and clearly, there's a lot of very passionate people here tonight. And those of you that initiated this petition feel passionate, and you spend a lot of time organizing, as I ran into one of the organizers walking my dogs, putting flyers on doorsteps in my neighborhood, I still have it. So your extraordinary efforts to get this out have not gone unnoticed. And I do want to assure you that every member of this council has read the petition, I have a copy of it with me, and I have read each and every comment as well, and I have them all right here. I want to get to that shortly. The good news is that that petition has actually motivated a lot of residents to want to get more information, including many that have gone to the preview center with the flyer in hand, and they have been very pleasantly surprised by what they've learned. And this is exactly what we've wanted from day one. Residents educating themselves with facts and full information that their feedback and input is credible to better help shape the final proposal. So listen, we fully respect everyone's right to their opinion, and honestly, we certainly anticipated pushback and disagreement before this was ever even introduced publicly. But I have to say, this petition is seemingly reasonable on its face, without, but it does not have full context. It does not provide the whole story, and it omits many important facts. I do want to thank you for reading it here tonight in public with a broad audience and members of the press here, because in the spirit of being helpful, I want to take this opportunity to provide our perspective on the merits of the petition and point out some of its inaccuracies in order to better inform the public. So some of the language in it is quite extreme, obliterating the sightline of trees. Well, no one does it mention that the project adds 200 trees to this landscape. It says in your petition, reducing the amount of open space. Well, actually, the project is adding two-plus acres of open space that is currently asphalt. It would increase traffic pollution and congestion. Well, the project actually improved traffic circulation at 10 known problem areas, and many people don't want to believe that, but the fact of the matter is, it's the revenue from this project that's enabling us to address current traffic problems that would otherwise not be feasible. It talks about pollution, we're talking about LEED-certified buildings, 30% improvement in stormwater runoff, 50% reduction in heat island effect. And also in the petition, we feel that the actual impacts of the project, traffic, pilots, business, real estate, neighborhood scale are insufficiently investigated and being downplayed by the Street Works Development or elected officials. Really? And the word "feel" itself points to the fact that there is zero evidence or facts to support a statement that is so central to the petition. I do want to say, it's also worth noting, and because what I did do on these comments is take a look at when things, the timeline of when things come out, and it's about being informed before drawing a conclusion. So the petition began circulating on December 8th, before any detailed information had been shared broadly regarding traffic mitigation measures, public benefits, financing, and pilot details, risk mitigation steps and more, all of which had since been made publicly available and yet still do not appear anywhere on the petition or on the two related resident organization websites. One of the petitioners released a letter to the editor on October 28th entitled, "One Westfield Place Is A No For Me," citing traffic as one of the major concerns when the first traffic info session wasn't even held until November 28th, with a full report not noticed until December 12th. Those who watched the session learned that this project would improve the traffic and pedestrian safety at 10 problem intersections that wouldn't be feasible for the town to finance or implement. And both the Westfield advocates and the Residents for Westfield website, where residents are directed when receiving the flyers about the project, they're flush with incomplete and sometimes even false information, including the notion that seven acres of public property are being developed by Street Works, when actually it's 2.3 acres, that open space is being eliminated, as I mentioned, when it's actually flat-surface parking lots being converted to two-plus acres of open public space. There's no mention of Westfield's historical loss of population, which someone mentioned, we've lost, we're 3,000 fewer, 2,000 fewer residents than we were in 1970, and jobs of which we've lost over 1,200. There's no link to the traffic report or any of the presentations that have been held or the comprehensive FAQs that are a direct response to questions that have been received by the public. The sites feature a letter to the editor from the three founding members who are currently litigating against the town on a completely separate project, and that was dated November 11th, again, before any information sessions were held on a variety of topics, and ironically, offer no actual suggestions for the proper way to develop Westfield, its objections with a link to a fundraising site. It's clear that this petition originated before much key information was made publicly available that specifically addresses many of the concerns raised by the signers. The reality is this has been and continues to be an unprecedented public input process with analysis and facts provided by a top-tier team, best-in-class of experts in finance, redevelopment law, traffic, parking, and smart growth. I've had a couple of finance people call and tell me that that was the best finance presentation they had ever seen by a municipality, and they were primary previous objectors to a project. The timing and details in many of the petition's comments suggest that numerous people signed it without realizing it's based on not full, complete information pushed by a small group who has opposed this project from day one. And just for, so I printed all these, and I actually did have the dates of when, I only have the comments. There's 75 comments on here, and I appreciate you reading them all tonight because I was actually going to read some myself. 75 comments. All of them, the big theme on all of these is traffic overdevelopment, is pretty much kind of what everybody says, right? 61 of the 75 comments were before December 12th, so before the traffic and finance presentations were even made available. Seven more came before the finance presentation on December 19th, and seven had been made since. So we're talking about 68 of the 75 comments were made before this information was even fully available to form a really credible opinion. So I have to say, and I just think that there is, the information like concerns, say, many residents over traffic, even worse, major flooding due to future storms, were actually reducing stormwater by 30%. Schools are overpopulated. No, they're not. We've actually, our school population has been declining. Westfield will become another overpopulated town full of crime. Really? Too much traffic, too much traffic. All of these were before the traffic report was even available. Let's see. Why, this is again, before this information was available, why are these being just handed over to Street Works, supposedly being funded by the dubious pilot deals? We don't need more office space and empty apartments in town. Okay, well, we don't have empty apartments in town. Nub traffic congestion, pollution destroying the charm of our town, the overdevelopment of Westfield needs to stop. And then just a few of them, how will Westfield support more businesses when it can't even keep stores occupied downtown? Another thing that's lost on people, Lord &amp; Taylor is 145,000 square feet of retail space, which is gone. This project proposes 25,000. That means when all is said and done, there's going to be 120,000 square feet less of retail space than there was two years ago. So that's, when I, so when I see these comments, it just makes me understand and appreciate that people are making, are signing and making fun of us without being fully informed. These politicians are being played by sophisticated, well-funded developers. Pilots will ruin the school system and overtax residents. There's roads and schools cannot accommodate. A tremendous rise in population, I guess they bring money to the town, but we lose the small, friendly feeling of our neighborhood. Even after this development, we're going to have less population than we did in 1970. Oh, this is a good one, with all due respect to Councilman Darty. I'm not certain that the War II calcum still lives in War II. Yeah, no, you don't actually need to, but I'm sure, my only point in saying this was that unfortunately, a lot of this and the timing of when these comments were made dismisses the credibility of what your legitimate concerns. Okay, this was, okay, just going to raise our taxes even more. It's exactly what we're not going to do. Even more traffic through Maria. What happened to our, sold out by politicians and special interests. Make Westfield great again. Stop voting for Democrats. So my point isn't to diminish and minimize your concerns, but it is to say, when you look at when these comments were made, in the context of their made, it says people are signing this without being fully informed, and unfortunately, it's not helpful to us as we try to inform the scope and scale of this project. So I also would imagine that it's safe to say that many of the 1,100 petition signers have not visited the preview center. I know many of you here, you're the most active, but I can tell you, I bet you most of them have, because there have not been that as many people that have gone there. I bet you they haven't read the 50 pages of FAQs, nor attended info sessions. And I'm certain that many of them also express concerns about high taxes and vacant downtown storefronts. It's the very issues we are seeking to solve. But for those that have taken time to learn the facts, and I believe there's many of you here, and you still object, I say thank you. That's exactly what we want. We want to hear your specific concerns and your suggestions for addressing them, and ultimately, we may agree just to disagree, and that's okay. But what's not okay is the red herring language used by the objectors to instill fear. Obliterate the sightlines, reduce the amount of open space, increase pollution. The actual impacts are insufficiently investigated. If I didn't know better, it is alarming, that would be alarming. I'd be alarmed too. But it's not reflective of the reality. And I just want to comment on a few other things, because you can see the term "overdevelopment" everywhere, it just seems to be this blanket term that people throw out. What I interpret that, in absence of more specifics, is a fear of change. And that is a legitimate fear with which I can appreciate and empathize. And let me, and I'm not going to reiterate, because I was actually going to comment on what those residents said in 1962 when Haynes was introduced, but Ms. Mulholland did that for me. You heard the concerns, it's going to change the character of our town. It's too much traffic, it's congestion. But we all know how that story concludes. Our community is still mourning the loss of Lauren Taylor. And unfortunately, the 1962 development of the Haynes parcel was the last significant investment in our downtown, but it wasn't for lack of trying. Because I want to direct you to the 1999 Downtown Westfield Improvement Plan. Maybe you haven't seen it, but let me tell you what this says. The Downtown Westfield Corporation submitted a downtown plan to the town council and planning board citing the need to improve traffic and pedestrian safety, as well as establish a long-term blueprint for the downtown to ensure its economic vitality and manage future growth. This is what the recommendations are from 1999. It included development of the Lord &amp; Taylor employee parking lots, the evaluation of every municipal parking lot for mixed-use redevelopment in collaboration with private developers, and the redevelopment of the South Avenue corridor into a more pedestrian-friendly commercial corridor to include structured parking and office buildings. And quote, "The residents of the neighborhood near South Avenue and the shoppers in the area deserve better," the report states. You know what happened next? Other than a few streetscape improvements, none of the recommendations were acted upon. And instead, we've experienced an exodus of employers and retailers, including the closure of Lord &amp; Taylor. And the South Side still doesn't have the business and pedestrian corridor it deserves. So One Westfield Place is not overdeveloped. It's a long overdue worthy investment in our downtown to make up for the lack of investment for the past 68 years. So regarding this petition, it's difficult for us on this day as to understand how residents can legitimately object to this proposal without having the facts, or before the proposal's even finalized. As I mentioned, modifications will be presented next week. I ask the public, and particularly the uninformed who have expressed a blanket objection to this proposal by signing this well-intended, but not necessarily well-conceived petition to perform your civic duty and review the incredible amount of information and material that has been released about this project with an open mind, and submit your comments and suggestions accordingly. So with that, we'll move on to tonight's agenda. So Councilman Parmerly. So, Councilman Parmerly.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I have twenty-one resolutions, nineteen of which I'd like to move in as a package. Uh, the first is a resolution to approve the cash management plan. Second's a resolution to approve the twenty-twenty-three petty cash accounts. The third's a resolution to appoint Public Agency Compliance Officer. Fourth is a resolution designating the Westfield leader and the Star Ledger as official newspapers. Fifth is a resolution to appoint the Green Team consisting of the following members: Hal Bass, Jeff Brick, Catherine Chowdhury, Katie Doyle, Ben Eisenberg, Mark Eisenberg, Peter Goldberg, Jay Goldring, Carrie Harret Hansen, Walter Corfucker, Lois Kraus is the co-chair, Karen Kavichina, Robert Lerner, Victor Liu, Darren McCauley, Amresh Mehta, and Pachia David Siegler is the co-chair, Janet Spizio, Tim Van App, Medea Valer, and Audrey Zavitz. Sixth is a resolution to appoint the Westfield Senior Advisory Council consisting of the following members: Brad Chaney, co-chair, Deidre Gilling, co-chair, Harvey Davidson, Jerry Rothleisch, Kathy Doolin, Kurti Malick, Michelle Martin, Paul Ielbacher, Pearl Weiner, Audrey Zavitz, and Bob Roth. Seventh is a resolution to appoint the auditor. Eighth, resolution to appoint town attorney. Nine, resolution to obtain professional services respective of the town attorney. Ten, resolution to appoint a labor attorney. Eleven, resolution to obtain professional services, a labor attorney. Twelve, resolution to appoint special counsel. Thirteen, resolution to appoint bond counsel. Fourteen, resolution to appoint redevelopment attorney. Fifteen, the resolution to appoint redevelopment planner. Sixteen, resolution to appoint redevelopment bond counsel. Seventeen, resolution to award contract for professional engineering services. Eighteen, resolution to award contract for health insurance consultants and broker services and risk management services. And nineteen, a resolution authorizing an agreement with CGPH.
May I have a second? So, my Councilman Darty, any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried.
Uh, next, I'd like to move a resolution to approve the twenty-twenty-three temporary budget.
May I have a second? My Councilman Mackey, any discussion? Please call the board.
Councilman Parmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippa?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract? Councilman Darty? Councilwoman Root? Mayor Brindl?
Yes, the motion is carried.
I'd also like to move a resolution to approve the twenty-twenty-three temporary swim pool utility budget.
May I have a second? And my Councilman Darty, uh, any discussion? Please call the board.
Councilman Parmerly?
Yes.
Councilman LaGrippa?
Yes.
Councilman Katz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mackey? Councilman Contract? Councilman Darty? Councilwoman Root? Mayor Brindl?
Yes.
And the motion is carried.
The motion is carried, yes.
Thank you. Okay, then lastly, I'd like to mention that those will be members, the following will be members of the Investment Advisory Council this year: Dominic Marillo, Drew Pecker, Mike Pruzinski, Lou Ku, Bijou Mohan, Lee Pacia, Tony Riedner, and Councilwoman Hadgood is the council liaison.
And I just want to say also thank you to all the Green Team and all the members that, lifelong and so forth, that, um, then that's advisory council for your efforts here. Um, so next is the Public Safety, Transportation, Parking Committee. Councilman Root.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three resolutions I'd like to move as a package. The first, resolution to appoint on-call public consultants. Second, a resolution to appoint redevelopment public consultants. And the third, a resolution to appoint redevelopment and management consultants.
May I have a second? Any discussion? I actually would, I, I meant to address this, because I think, uh, Mr. Fusaro brought it up about payment. Um, how much has the town spent on the redevelopment consultants? That would be none. It is all paid for by the developer, and that's the way redevelopment works. We have our separate escrow account. We hire our own consultants. They work and advocate for the town, and we send them the bill. And that same is gonna apply to the, to the ones that we are actually appointing, reappointing tonight. So, um, may I have a second? I already did that. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? This motion is carried. Next is the Total Review and Town Popery Committee. Councilman Parmerly?
Next, Mayor, I'd like to move a resolution. I'd like to move a resolution to appoint a municipal housing liaison.
May I have a second? So, my Councilman Mackey, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? This motion is carried. Last is the Public Works Committee. Councilman Katz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move a resolution to appoint C-three sewer operator.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Contract. Exactly. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Uh, this motion is carried. And now, I have the great pleasure.
I, I want to share a few comments about
Sure, of course.
Street Works and everything. Um, and, and first, thank everyone who approached the dais tonight, uh, and even prior for the comments, uh, and sharing your concerns. A hundred percent, we hear you. We absolutely do, and we are advocating on your behalf to make changes to this project proposal. Um, Street Works hears you, too, and is acutely aware of the importance of listening to the voice of the customer. What's more, you can believe that they are a trusted partner and will follow through with making changes, as the mayor's indicated this evening, to the proposal. After all, they have a vested interest in the long-term vitality of our town. Personally, I do, too. My wife and I moved into town. We downsized from our home on Benson Place, uh, back in the summer, and, uh, we had, could have moved to, uh, lovely apartment villages such as San Andres Circle or the apartment complex on Mountain Avenue, but we decided to move in town. Wanted to move in town, uh, to enjoy everything that the town has to offer. So, I live in town. We walk in town. We bike in town. We shop in town. So, challenge accepted since July twenty-twenty-two. Respectfully, not everything the opposition wants to remain unchanged will be. We must take action. We cannot cling to the status quo. We must diversify our tax base so there's less financial burden on our taxpayers. We must redevelop for the future of Westfield, and folks, you will still have the Memorial Day Parade. You will still have the Rose Shandville March and Adams Fest. These are just a few of the examples, the events that bring us together. And you know what? I'm confident that this redevelopment plans for more green spaces and improved walkability will result in us coming together even more. And that's not just a great opportunity for our downtown, it's a great opportunity for all of us. Thank you.
And we'll obviously have more to say on that. And I do want to introduce Reverend Dr. Jennifer Testa-Gurnick. Uh, she reels that, you didn't, she's, she's new to the First Congregational Church. I guess it's not completely new now, is it? Couple months, how long has it been?
Nine months.
Nine months. Uh, you didn't notice this was actually a hazing exercise when I asked you, did you? To, and, and I said she was coming, and she has graciously offered to do the benediction for this reorg meeting, and I promised her, I said, "They typically don't last very long." So, um, anyway, I'm thrilled. Uh, you know, you have a really good insight into the community now, right? So, Jen, thank you so much for joining and, um, offering the benediction for us, so we should probably all rise for the benediction.
Well, just to note that, um, although I am new to First Congregational, I'm not new to Westfield. I was actually born into it, and I'm fourth-generation Westfield, um, so, uh, so I'm thrilled to be, um, in a leadership role now. Um, as we stand at the dawn of a new year and boards and committee members have been appointed, I offer you all a charge and a blessing. Go now from this place into the service of the people that you are called to serve, to speak against injustice and inequity, to speak for unity, acceptance, and inclusion, to speak up for the betterment of our community and our worlds, and to lead with wisdom, grace, and inspiration. And know that you do not go this call alone, but in the strength of the one who calls and sends you. So, go from here in confidence and hope, knowing that God goes with you, and as you go, may the blessings of the God of life be upon you this day and forevermore. Amen.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Hello.
Uh, seconds?
Seconds.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
Uh, this reorg meeting is adjourned. Thank you, all.